Good evening and thank you, everyone, for attending. I would like to call the April 8, 2024 Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session Meeting to Order. As a reminder to all of the audience, study sessions are not public hearings. Therefore, no action will be taken, and there will be no public comment. Ms. Carmella, Clerk, will you please call the role?
Chairperson Griffiths.
Present.
Vice Chairperson Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Rutherford. Commissioner Rankin. Commissioner Bordon.
Here.
Commissioner Laney. Commissioner Erb.
Present.
Thank you, Carmella. Are there any announcements from the Commission? Thank you. Our discussion item this evening will be presented by the Director of Development Services, Ms. Donna Kennedy, and she will be talking about Lake Shore 650. I would like to ask the Commission members if we could all please hold our questions until the end of Ms. Kennedy's presentation. So, thank you for that. Welcome, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Griffiths, Vice Mayor Evans, and Commissioners. Pleasure to be here because this is an opportunity for us to work together prior to the public hearing scheduled for Lake Shore. I know it's been a while. I'm sure you've heard. You may have attended neighborhood meetings. I know, I think, last month I submitted the IPR, that it was part of that application, but I never really had a chance to stand in front of you because there's a lot of moving parts to this application. We really haven't done one, to this extent, to master plan in Prescott Valley. So, I'd like to go ahead, and once I get through this, by all means, any type of input that we get is really considered by our staff. We're in the process right now of determining development agreement terms. Those include many. Traffic are for one. We're still working. Our town engineers working with them for the traffic study. There's still some final pieces that need to be met with the puzzle. You know, what is the open space? What kind of amenities do we want in the park? So, keep that in consideration when I'm running through the presentation. I know this might be a misconception for some people because they think this is all the actual planning comes up front. This is just only the beginning, the 30,000-square-foot recommendation that's going to be moving forward. Because after the PAD approval, we will take it and then get into the weeds on all the development. So, each, it's a 650-acre project. It's not going to be planned at one. A lot of it's determined on market. Example, we do know there's 100 acres of commercial. That 100 acres may come back 50 acres at a time, but with a plan for you to review and see, to give them that C2 designation. This is the PAD moving forward. We are, you know, other areas of study. I know it's been a very popular request for the pronghorn. We do have discussions going with them on that. So, at the public hearing, there'll be more of where we're at to meet what your constituents have on top of mind, what staff has on top of mind, but more importantly, how you hear from the community, too. You're the boots on the ground and maybe have some ideas you can give me. I will run with the ideas to our staff members to see how we can adjust a plan to meet maybe something that we haven't thought of that you might have, or something that's important. But for right now, it's just the preliminary of what the application was and how it relates to the general plan. And we take all concerns seriously. It's not, it was, this plan was, or the application was introduced September 1st. So, it's been eight months, and trust me, it's eight months of sitting and meeting and all departments, planning and looking at different ways of how to make it work, how to work with the applicant, meeting every week. And, you know, undoubtedly, we're still not at the end of a development agreement yet. So, that just shows you how the town has certain priorities. It's a project that could be well-received after we get everything ironed out because it's located, and I should go to the next slide. As you know, off of the 89A and Lake Shore Drive, 52 acres as far as the part, well, the park is 26 acres located in the triangular piece to the west side of the project. I'll get into more details of how the residential works, and then the commercial is immediately right off of Lake Shore and 89A north and south of it. So, we're surrounded by state land. There's some things that we're talking about, some good ideas with potential state land. So, it's a holistic approach on very many levels. Our general plan, as you know, it's the PAD F2. It's our Tier Two of growth and development. So, it's already got that PAD designation. What this is, is the master development plan to fit under the PAD designation. And as I mentioned earlier, each section will come back for that zoning designation for a public hearing for future development. Let's just say Phase One comes online first, and it's built out within five years. They'll come out with Phase Two for the next zoning, and a traffic study and other analyses will be done at each benchmark for development. So, I'm going to run through the parks' general plan goals and policies. So, and I'm going to read through this because it's important to read every word on what the goals are. Residential neighborhoods should be integrated with central activity focus points to reinforce the sense of community. We've been looking through some of their ideas, and I believe they meet that goal. Promote interconnectivity of neighborhoods via the pedestrian bicycle system as outlined in the general plan for parks, recreation, and open space elements. We certainly look at that and see how their internal parks and our community park on the external, the connectivity with paths and trails, and they're meeting that criteria. Policy to develop a network of parks and trails, as mentioned, open spaces. And these open spaces were, have a dual function, not just open space visually, but, you know, for water treatment and watershed management, and, you know, it plays many roles for the open space. Connect population centers that'll support the needs of all residents through well-designed parks, recreation amenities. So, the commercial area, too, it's, you know, a lot of communities, you'll see a commercial area, but then they don't necessarily have the workforce housing around them. There's not trails that people could ride their bikes to work. This project will demonstrate that there's activities that will all be designed to be interconnected. Coordinate with local developers and communities to ensure interconnectivity. We are doing this right now as a town as well, between trails and trail segments during the development of new projects to help complete the town's trail system. But I don't know if any of you have heard of Ian McCarg. It's, he was a planner, I think, back from the 80s, but with GIS, you can start mapping out things. Where's the habitat corridors? Where are riparian areas? Where are traffic patterns? Where's trail system? Where's the bike system? It's the multimodal uses of paths and trails. And you can be assured, we're working regionally on this as we speak and have been for quite some time, and, well, there's the definition of quite some time since I've been here, I know that. So, we're looking forward to the productivity of what our groups are going to accomplish over the next year. Open space. There's three categories of open space. You know, there's the natural open space, and mind you, these character photos, ours will have more photos of our native plants here and give more of a representation of Prescott Valley, what we're about. So, the open space corridors for green belts throughout the town. We've got neighborhood parks that are about a quarter acre to an acre and a quarter, similar to maybe what you see over at Stone Ridge, but within the community, they'll have their open space. We'll have a recreation corps that has many amenities to it, not only the clubhouse, but the pools, the parks, and open space for the community there as well. So, when you drive through it, you do get that sense of community, and actually, that will foster attraction for families, workforce, and I always try to find a term for retirement communities or whatever, but there'll be something for everyone here, and that's part of the goal for the general plan. So, the recreation corps, this kind of gives you an idea, bringing families together, bringing the community together, and whether it's the kids on up to the adults and their beverages. It'll be interactive and have sports like pickleball, volleyball, and other amenities on site. So, it will be an active corridor. So, it's very exciting. It's something to offer for a community. Now, these amenities, the open space amenities, I know this was the most important in our minds, too. How are we going to address the trails, how they go along the washes and the river bottoms, et cetera? And then wildlife, and not only wildlife, but the riparian area as well. So, I know there's been studies, past studies, there needs to be current studies, there needs to be discussions with fish and wildlife and save the dels. We're getting many groups together. What is important to this project, there'll be a preservation easement over it so that long-term, we can plan this as open space and not have trails in it or not use it for any other purposes, but to try to manage it and keep it to where the wildlife and plant materials can continue to grow for future generations. So, water harvesting this side, this is one of many techniques that we have and that we're looking at because the watershed is so important to the community, but we're working with them for other techniques as well, you know, setting off open space and land areas for the water management plan. So, this, on every phase that we're doing, it's going to be analyzed for our environmental and other resources, but especially for water conservation management. So, it's going to be interesting, water harvesting, water gardens, commercial areas, trying to make this the best we can for a pilot project so future projects that come on board can turn to this project and say, "Look at what was successful there," and implement it on all. So, we're very excited to learn and grow with them each phase, the new techniques that come up with and working with our different projects, coordinators, engineers, and consultants that the city has hired to evaluate the projects as they come in and make recommendations to them. So, it'll be a joint effort, a collaborative effort, and everyone's on us to try to come up with something new because this will be the pride of our community. This is just a quick overview. The trail system throughout it will be multimodal, anywhere from a 10-foot pass, 6-foot, some areas it might be 4-foot, but it all depends on where the location is, whether it's on Lake Shore Drive or internal to the project. There'll be variations of different type of paths. Residential, it's a schematic here, this map, but this is what we wanted to show you. To the west, it'll be the lower, larger lots, kind of gradually go into the denser, but then the mixed-use apartment complex in the commercial area along 89A. So, this is mostly what the town and working with the developer, we wanted, because we wanted to be respectful of the residential units to the west. Having it this way might put all the traffic to one side, and it's not to say no traffic's going to go towards downtown or go westward. Here again, the traffic impact is going to be done in phases to match the development phases, so everything will be coordinated per the development agreement. So, we're not all over the place on, "Oh, we did a traffic study early on. We don't need to do one now." It's going to spelled out in the development agreement that we want it for each phase and what the conditions are on that year. You know, we can't predict when every phase is going to be completed. We, you know, there's so many checkboxes you need to do, whether it's financing, advertising, where the market is these days, where the demand for the housing type is at that point. But we're confident, starting the first phase, the park is going to be in on the first phase, and that was per the town's request because we felt that it's a community park out front. We wanted to show that they're a community, they're playing, not playing, they're working with us to satisfy not only their community needs, but the community at whole. And I guess I could read through them. Provide for a fully balanced residential mix, which they will be doing, and I'll demonstrate in a bit, which includes wide range of housing by location, type of unit, and price to accommodate various income levels, family size, age, and physical restraint that addresses both owner and rental households. Another goal is to discourage construction of new housing at substantially lower densities than the maximum permitted by the general plan, particularly on sites that are designated for medium and medium-high densities of residential. The other policies now, those were some of the goals, but promote development of a variety of housing types, included single-family, attached-detached home, even modular unit homes. Have a new definition these days, multifamily homes and apartments, senior apartments, condominiums, and other types of housing that are encouraged within the community to provide diverse palette of housing types to meet the diverse housing needs of our residents. Support new construction projects that meet the needs of targeted populations, the disabled, lower-income seniors. Promote housing development that meets the needs of households regardless of income. And I know the applicant has really tried to think this through. They want it to be quality development, but yet at affordable prices. There's different terms mentioned for all of them, but I'll show here in a few slides to explain what each one means. So, these are obviously the single-family. These are the modern farm type for this phase, the first phase that are proposed. These are examples. They may be refined. You may find something, "Well, you know, we've got too much of that. We want something else." Whatever kind of impact or you think it may have, or input you might want to give, this will help them with the long-term planning of it, too. The attainable characters, and I don't know, have, I think we may have mentioned it in the past about Zeni homes. I don't know if any of you have gone to their website to actually show what it is. These are made in Page, Arizona, and by a local developer that are providing an alternative use for something that's affordable, but to modern trends. They're actually kind of cool and nice. I know Mesa has done a development on this. It's successful, and we thought we might bring some modern, new type of manufactured off-site kind of housing product. The commercial area, the goal is to promote a complementary mix of land uses, including retail entertainment, civic facilities, employment housing, community open space, encourage pedestrian-friendly residential development that encourages neighborhood and community services. So, our goal is to provide a variety of industrial and/or job-based uses. We've asked the applicant to really look for something as of a medical nature, medical offices up in this area because it's off the 89 that maybe more of the community could come and sponsor the doctors and our centers for the medical, and they were all on it. They do have active, I don't want to say because, you know, I'll let them speak at the hearing, but active developers that are very interested and see this vision of what is on Lake Shore, and they want to be part of the discussion and planning of it. 100 acres is a lot to take on with one, so you really need a developer that has experience in this, and there's a couple out there that really do, and I think it would really benefit our town if we not only had the workforce and the revenues and services that the community all can share. So, the architectural character of the community, sign a complementary to what's existing now, more of the modern farmhouse, open spaces, gathering places, to where the community will want to come out and sponsor, participate in. One thing in my department and Economic Development Department, you know, what is there to do? I have toured a handful of commercial developers on here, and that's the one question, what do we do? And not that we need all the nightlife that, you know, some Scottsdale towns have or whatnot, but we want to offer something for future generations, our youth and families. I know I take my adult kids and grandkids to areas like this, and it becomes a day event, and there is even room for a hotel there. Maybe it's an experience. They did ask us up front, "What type of businesses would you like to see here? What type of hotels?" We gave our opinion. I took a survey, but if there's something, community or any of you would like me to have them go solicit, I'm happy to share those thoughts as well. So, this is a snapshot of the economic impact, and it relies heavily on the construction. But, you know, long-term planning for this, it depends on the user that we have. So, there'll be a mix of tenants that come in here. It could be anywhere from a quick grab-and-go lunch. It could be for sit-down restaurants. It could be evening rooftop type of atmosphere for the weekend, but then also mixed use. You could have businesses on the lower ground. Entrepreneurs, we're really trying, our economic development is trying to really support that where we have entrepreneurs coming in and then living in their same place as they do in other communities. So, there's a lot of ideas, long-term planning on this, but in order for this project to really be successful, you do need the densities in there, and I have found that out from other communities. The densities are the workforce. The densities are the ones that can support the revenue, but it also, the surrounding community coming to see an establishment that is populated by all their friends that live around the town. So, this, we're excited to say that will be a great venue for us to have an entertainment district on as well. Traffic, you know, we have goals in the general plan for that. We have the master traffic plan. This is one of our serious conversations we have with them, and our town engineer has been giving them speculations, or specifications, I should say, in their TIA, and that's ongoing. I just heard today that they're going to be sending in, they've addressed most of them. So, here's another thing that'll be reported at the public hearing, but it just goes to show you for eight months, trying to see what we could come up to, to bring to the public for the public hearing. So, to provide streets that create comfortable walking environments that are not overwhelmed by traffic speeds and volumes, by recognizing reasonable requirements for vehicle access, establish policies and standards to address unique transportation needs in the existing town site, and in new developments such as controlling access along major roadways, policies and standards, along with the implementation plan. Will maintain and improve upon the existing roadway infrastructure as town grows. So, especially that last point, as the town grows. So, this area, again, they will have predictions of what's going to happen in the first place and collectively, phase, and collectively with the second, third, they may need a fourth. We're hoping it's going to be a popular destination area, and that will continue offering new concepts as we go in a timely manner because nobody wants a project to sit out there. So, we'll have a, and, you know, anything could happen like COVID, but for the most part, master plans I've seen got on full timeline. They've got their own timeline, demands they've got to meet for finding, enhancing, et cetera. So, they're going to want to get this plan built out in phases in a productive manner. Circulation is also very important, not only within the project, but without. How does it go down, or to the west, to the southwest? How do we maintain what that might look like in the first phase? Might be different in the second phase. But an interesting note on this, just to keep in mind, too, the town, now that we have a town engineer, there's going to be strategies from off their site all the way into town, Robert wrote, I believe, and how we're going to address it, what improvements we're going to make, you know, what street scape, landscape, that will not, that'll be minimal impact to the neighborhoods there, but still address it because on our master plan, street master plan, it's an arterial road, but we don't want the impact to homes that are right on and have driveways onto it. So, our town engineer is really looking at and addressing it, and we will have, like, we will have public meetings on that and what our plan is going to be at a future date. So, and with the community input and what likes and dislikes of what that might look Street scape character, again, this is just to illustrate that it'll be a lot of plants. It's going to be like you're driving through a relaxed environment that's sustainable, that tells the true story and character of Prescott Valley, and that will give a good impression of what our character of our town is. But this is just to show that it's not all going to be just desert cactus, but just to show there'll be other plants that'll be in the palette, that has to be our native plant material, that's water prohibi, not prohibited, but there might be water gardens there that just survive solely on rainwater. So, it'll be a mix of different types of plant uses. So, as I explained, the whole vision, parks, trails, addressing water issues through the resources and designs that they have on site, a commercial corridor, our preservation of some of the open space here. They're going to have a community center. We recognize the wash and the coyote wash and the agua fría, and how does that all tie in to make it a thriving community for this area? So, with that, I'm happy to go into the next steps or questions, but before next steps, I'd like to hear from you all because I will run with what you say and see if any, we could get most of them addressed and put into the project.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. We can now entertain questions from the Commission Vice Chair Evans.
I've got a short list. If I get too wordy, you'll cut me off.
Absolutely. You know I will.
First thing, just a comment. Today, we received through the Development Services Department email submissions from three citizens, and I found each and every one of them to be well-researched, very sincere, and well-reasoned, so I hope that they will form part of staff's consideration and also be perhaps forward to the applicant because they were, all three were excellent submissions and I think should be very seriously considered.
And we were very pleased to get those, just to let you know. It's not that we're ignoring them. As I said, we have groups already working on this.
Okay.
And trying to come up with strategies to address them. So, you know, those are taken to heart and have already been appreciated.
Great. Couple of these questions might be premature for the stage of development of the application, and you'll let me know if that's the case. Almost all projects that we've seen lately, proposed or approved, have included leased land for sale units. Has the applicant indicated if that's going to be part of their mix here?
A portion of it made. That is, the financial aspects of what they're doing is their business model. I don't review their business model, but yeah, that might be something that you might have some discussion with me on that because some of your findings, overview has been addressed, but.
Various developers have touted this leased land model as an attainability feature, and it's not. It's exactly the opposite. I sent, you know, on January 6th, I sent in that study and metric that I did. I think it's correct. I'd like some feedback, and it's now April. I wouldn't mind if we could have a meeting soon.
Yes, and as far as that and that model, sequentially for the economics of it, they will address that. So, there will be given statements on that.
But I'd still like to have some feedback from staff. It's been three months. I don't see a secondary access road. Everything goes to Lake Shore. If there's a problem on Lake Shore and there's an emergency situation, are we addressing that? Is the applicant being asked to provide a secondary or emergency access?
Well, there's the first one through the residential and the loop around down the commercial corridor, but certainly, and, you know, we need to look at, you know, potentially an additional one, if that's what you're saying.
That's my concern, is that all roads lead to Lake Shore. So, if you've got a problem on Lake Shore, even if you've got six access streets going into Lake Shore and Lake Shore is jammed up, you've got a problem. So, again, just a suggestion to study that, please.
Sure.
I think you've given us an overview of sort of the negotiation to date between the, without, you know, getting into specifics, and maybe you could give a little more color on that, but I'm kind of minimizing my questions here not to take up too much time. My last one is, they're talking about a wildlife corridor. At our last study session, one of your colleagues, as part of her portfolio, she is looking at that, and it could be a very long-term sort of a thing. One of the emails today, and I'm not a wildlife expert, I do not know the answer to this, but if you've got a 50-acre corridor that's this wide and that long, and it's got people on either side of it, pronghorn or skittish animals, they're beautiful, but they're very nervous, I don't think, I don't know if a 50-acre skinny corridor works to be able to accommodate wildlife and their ranging and stuff, so perhaps you could put that on your list as well. I've got a few more here.
Yes, Vice Chair.
But I'm sure it'll be addressed by other commissioners. I don't want to monopolize.
Yes, Vice Chair, we are, Madam Chair, we are looking at alternatives on that. I can assure you, there might be something coming up at the public hearing.
Maybe a wildlife corridor is really like 2,000 acres that's just left verdant. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, I don't know. Thank you very much, sorry for.
Thank you, Vice Chair Evans.
Good questions, and this is what we hope to get, to get out of this.
Noreenkin?
My only concern is, in the past, when we've approved the different projects with the town, the amount of units that a developer is going to put in are pretty specific, and then sometimes, as it goes along, things change and so forth. But if I understood you right in your presentation, this is going to be kind of working its way through, how do you project to handle the assured water?
Yes, yes, sir. And we have, with the development agreement, there'll be a cap on units, and moving forward, there might be a Phase 1 that decides not to be as dense, but Phase 2, they'll ultimately scatter them between different areas, but they can't go above the number the development agreement has proposed.
So as a board, will we, will, as we go through, and I'm going to call it phases that, that they do, will they have to do separate assured waters with each phase? Will that also come through?
Yes.
As part of the approvals that we do? I mean, we don't control the water here on this board, but that's something that'll have to be done in order for them to start the next phase.
And demonstrate it correct, and they have to have that assurance.
Vice Chair, Commissioner Urb, any questions for Ms. Kennedy?
I have a couple, just clear, probably more clarification, and I'm sure it would come up in the, in the public hearing, so if it's something that we either, A, don't have answers to yet, or there'll be more detail later, that's fine. The questions I have, I want to make sure I understood what I heard correctly first, relative to the parks. So I heard that the residential areas would be equipped with own neighborhood parks or community areas for residents, but on top of that, a 26-acre community park for all folks involved.
Correct.
Not just unique to that neighborhood, but all of Prescott Valley.
Correct. And it will be implemented and put into place, hopefully with the development agreement terms in the first phase.
Community park would be part of Phase 1. The bigger, the 26-acre park is part of Phase 1, if it's, did I hear that correctly?
I'm sorry, it's part of what?
The first phase of development?
Yes.
Okay. With the cap on units, is there potential that that density could be decreased, or is that just a set minimum?
There could be, potential be decreased, but increased, no. They'd have to come through and amend the development agreement to get support to do so and have a rationale to do so.
Let's see, the different residential types that you were showing earlier, I think it was, I can't remember, the different pages, but where we showed the attainable characteristics, the residential characteristics, and the commercial, obviously, is this, is the intent of the developer to intermingle the single-family characteristics with the attainable characteristics? They are drastically different from a visual perspective. I, I've seen a number of communities where they do this sort of thing, but it's graduated through the community, where we start with commercial, maybe up front, near the highway, we move to maybe that mixed-use sort of attainable housing, and then residential single-family further out away from the denser area of the development. Is that the intent? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, Commissioner Urb, it is, according to like this slide, some may be intermixed right at the center where it's allowed for mixed use, more of the reddish colors, but then once that goes through, it'd be the single family is all in the gold.
Okay.
There might be, and this is going through, there might be a local commercial node, we haven't seen that yet, so there's, there's a couple different zoning categories that they want to go for. One is the R1L, the RS, and the C2. So the RS and the C2 are from midpoint over, and they allow for a mixed-use development. But everything along the west side will not, it'll be residential strictly.
Okay. Two more questions, and then I'm done. Has the developer spoken to restrictions on the vegetation? We talk a lot about water usage, water availability, and things like dryscapes versus, you know, plants that require a lot of water on a daily basis, right? Do we have the ability to enforce a dryscape process where we could require plantings or things that, for the entire development, require little to no water in lieu of people getting to choose what they want, or brown homes, for example, saying, well, in our residential, we're going to allow this, but in the commercial, we're going to have vegetation that may require more watering than, than say, our residential units?
And that's definitely something for consideration too, and of which they'd be accepted. We, our goal is to get water neutral, so, you know, maybe a few trees might have more, but in general, you know, because we want shade, too.
Ones out there and that sort of stuff.
Right.
Okay. Last question is, I totally commend and appreciate and am supportive of what I consider mixed use, I would call this something like a town center type of development, right? A work, live, and play atmosphere is what I would, would call something like this. So relative to people's concerns about traffic congestion and those sort of things, is, is there discussion with the developer to extend what, and I don't mean this in a derogatory way, but what little mass transit we have here in Prescott Valley to extend out to that area as far as bus routes and, and those sort of things? Because not everybody that certainly lives in that area is going to be able to work in that area. They're going to commute, just like the majority of the rest of us do, but if they're coming into town, into the heart of town or into Prescott, be able to use those sort of things that I know we've been trying to expand on in the last year or two.
Yes, they've, they've thrown out ride share programs and any other way to help offset traffic issues, so those have definitely been considerations, especially for the workforce.
That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Urb. Commissioner Bordon?
Evening, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you for the presentation, it was well received. Reviewed it earlier, it helped out, at least on a starting point of providing some preliminary Mr. Evans brought up a comment that I was going to make, but I just wanted to distinguish between, he brought up the lease issue of residential areas, which I consider a problem. But that doesn't mean that maybe in commercial areas, that might be an appropriate thing, but I just wanted to point out that I agree with him, I'm, I think that's a problem, it avoids, well, let's just say it's a problem. It doesn't really help out, quite honestly, in the attainable housing issue, that's just my opinion. But I did want to distinguish that, because it's kind of common in some commercial ventures to do leasing, but.
Totally different.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to bring that up, I'm glad you brought up the, the issue of, of the leased land. The density, you know, I'm kind of thinking it's a little high, but it's not outrageous, and I hope you and, and the developer and the, your planning staff can maybe work to bring that down. I'll leave that to you. I did not think it was totally outrageous, but I would like to see it come down closer to four units per acre, I think it's at 4.6. Again, I don't think that's outrageous, because it's spread out over the entire acreage, and then will densify as you move into higher density areas, you know, less dense in other areas. So it's not outrageous, but I want to point out, I agree that once we set it, it kind of sets the standard for that density, that it won't go higher over the next decade or two that this develops, or however long it takes. But it's a good point of trying to set it right now and make sure we're comfortable with it.
And maybe we can adjust that by having stronger language in the development agreement, you know, as appropriate and commercially reasonable with market conditions, certain areas to lower the densities, and identify some way, some measurable term that might help achieve that goal.
Okay. Like I said, I'm, it doesn't, it's not causing me great concern, I just, I think you're right at the limit of the target that I would see for that property. Some usual question, so this, this development is not seeking to form a special district to construct infrastructure, correct?
As of today, no, they've looked into it, but we will let you know at the public meeting.
Okay.
If the CFD might be, you know, we have our own policies for that, and they're penciling it to see if the reality is there for it.
That's outside, I believe that's outside our purview.
Yes.
I, I just hate them. So I, I think they're something that, again, if you're looking for housing that people can afford, you know, somebody goes in, buys a home, they think that that's the cost, it's not very open to some people, unless you know about CFDs and special assessments, that you're going to get that additional tax, and it really is the developer using that property tax for the future to construct the improvements, and so then that leaves the homeowner, who's not that astute always in this issue, to have to understand, well, if this home, 2,000 square feet, is X dollars here, it should be less, because I'm paying a special district than another home that's not. So I just hope they don't, it's the town council's purview, I'll leave it at that, okay? But I appreciate you knowing that they haven't yet brought, haven't yet confirmed they would want to go that direction.
And there's ways, it's a tool, if you will, but to get the park financed and in early on, we're looking at everything, so.
I just.
Other things, but thank you for your input, because it, it does help us.
A ditto on CFDs. As a, as a victim of one in Quillwood, when it was done, probably 60% of the expense was legitimate, 40% was bogus, and if we can avoid CFDs like the plague, I fully support what Commissioner Bordon just said.
Yes, and in the past, we've been caught too, because the escrow, it just, there's, we understand. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor it, I mean, but if we're purely trying to look after the public, and I'll leave the town on how they deal with CFDs and the policies, I, it's just a problem. And yes, I was astute enough to know that when I bought, I stayed out if any.
Yeah.
Broke my realtor crazy, thought I was a nut.
Yeah.
Last thing, I think, there was a question of access and secondary access, and I think it's a good point, I, I can see how, you know, maybe in the future, working with the fire marshal and, and emergency management, understanding in this large parcel how, you know, there would be evacuations occurring. One of the biggest constraints you have on access here is, Fane Road is a controlled access highway, and it does not have any additional access points available along this corridor, at least in the corridor of this parcel. So, I mean, maybe ADOT would be willing to address if there was true emergencies, having to come out on Fane Road, but I know there is not available access, and, and they're pretty serious about that. But I, I echo that that's something that should be addressed, and I look forward to seeing the answers, and I think hopefully with, you know, the town engineer, working with, you know, CAFMA and other fire response, first responders, as well as maybe emergency management, come up with a way that that could be addressed.
Oh, absolutely, and, and I could see where you're, what you're saying.
That's all I had, and I just wanted to thank you for a very nice presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, for a great presentation. I do have a couple questions. Ditto to Vice Chair Evans on the emails that we received today from some of the members that are in the audience. I did call you and ask that those specifically be passed on to the developer, and you said they would be, because there was some good information in there, so thank you for doing that.
And they'll take note of that as well.
I do, I'm concerned over the 3,000 number for density, because several of us during our time on planning and zoning commissions have seen when developers come back, when a phase comes forward and they ask to have the density either increased or decreased, and that is their right. So in this case, I feel that we need to somehow come down lower out of the funnel to really lock in the density numbers, because they cannot come back and ask for higher or lower densities.
Oh, it'll be locked in, the higher number.
Perfect.
But how they transfer it, where they want to put them, but I would imagine all the higher densities wouldn't go anywhere else other than by the 89A and south of Lake Shore. I, I just don't see that, you know.
But a number needs to be locked in.
Yes, it'll be locked in through the development agreement.
Perfect. I had, would you clarify for the members in the audience with us this evening, the relationship between a planned area development and a master plan? Because this is operating as both, and I would like for them to have a clear understanding.
Yes, so this is an overlay on the general plan that says this is a village pad F2. So the pad they're anticipating, these are large development plans for this area. The master plan kind of comes under the umbrella and says what the plan is for the PAD, for the 640 acres. So pads could be, like you see in the general plan, each developer, each property owner has to come through with a master plan for that area. So this happens to be for Lake Shore, their plan, master plan of development.
So the master plan, then, will come forward and will have in it certain development standards.
Correct.
That will be outlined, for example, a wildlife corridor will be a standard in there.
It'll be part of the development agreement for this that we identify, that's as one of the standard and requirements.
Correct.
But it may not be for another one that doesn't have a wash, it's case by case.
Perfect. But it will be under the umbrella of the master plan's standards.
Correct.
Have we addressed with the many lighting standards, and you briefly touched on landscaping, but those will all be standards?
Yeah, they'll have a master lighting plan, you know, and the parks will be different from the street scape and from the entryway, so those will have to be cleared, and let's just say if it's park lighting, they have to meet the park lighting standards.
And we can develop new standards for this particular project?
We could, it could be a themed lighting standard that might, you know, be supportive as versus something else, but I know we have to look at the, the candlelight and what the light reflection is, I can tell you that everything from our code, everything's downlit so that the parks that are proposed for the area won't be shining on the adjacent neighborhoods to the south and/or internally.
So to go along with Commissioner Urb's comment about landscaping and zero scape and low water usage, that isn't specifically called out now to that nth degree in our code? So for this project, we could really zero in and, and tighten up those standards.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
They will go off of our ADWR, I believe, is the plant list we have for water tolerant plants, so they'll go through that, but at the same time, if they have a theme plant, that they'll come and present that to you at the time of the hearing. So there might be a community theme that they'll look at to get your input.
Perfect, and then I have one more, I thought I wrote down. Oh, the traffic. So with our town traffic engineer, and you mentioned that they will be working hand-in-glove, I would hope that our town engineer would be involved from the very beginning with these roads and the circulation, and like Commissioner Bordon said, and Vice Chair Evans, the one access, I mean, we're going to look at that sooner than later, before a situation arises.
Correct. They are hearing you now, and I'm sure just as far as even bringing in CAFMA in on this, you know, the design standards for the street. CAFMA in on this, you know, the design standards for the streets and regulations. So those have already been in meetings and discussed.
Do we know how many phases are in the overall project? I haven't seen that number.
They've, are proposing it. I think the last, I'll have to tell you for sure. I, I believe it's three or four, but depending if the commercial's going to be two-phased approach. But certainly, it's market-driven. So if they sell out the first phase within, you know, six months, second phase comes right on with many more homes. And they have an estimated homes per phase to be built. So it depends on the construction of those phases and if the homes get sold.
And again, for the public here, each phase will come before us.
Yes.
For approval, denial, change, et cetera.
Correct. And let's just say at a future phase, they want to go a different route with different models, and they're changing it to meet a different theme. It'll all be discussed then, and then, and where the placement of the lots are. And, you know, the topography dictates where they can go and what, we all know that. But those will all be vetted out through the process.
And for the record, I am against land lease. I don't feel it's appropriate, and it does not do anything to help the environment of affordable, attainable workforce housing. So I do not agree with that concept whatsoever. So Vice Chair Evans?
Yeah, just a couple of quick other questions. Regarding open space, their narrative talks about 130 of the 650 acres, so approximately 20% open space, which sounds fantastic. However, when you read through part of the narrative, specifically on page 54, they talk about 50 acres of open space being basically drainage corridors and washes, and there are some significant washes, especially the Agua Freia and Coyote. Is there a sort of formula within development services that if, like, at a minimum, a certain, now I think your, your rule of thumb is 10% open space, right, generally?
Generally for, I think it's 10 to 20, 10%, yeah.
Plus or minus. But when you're looking at something that's got this much area in washes and unbuildable areas, is there going to be a specific percentage dedicated to make sure that it's parks and trails and all that kind of thing? It's not going to be 20%. It's going to be all washes, and then we're just like packed in like sardines?
Well, we all, we'll look for trails and bike paths along those, and plus, as I mentioned, the water recharge system where it's appropriate, and if they put wetlands and other areas. So it will all be identified and the use for it, or if it's just for that quiet place for an open space, they may have a bench by it along a trail. But above and beyond the 10% will be looked at, and there'll be a, I don't want to say use, but more of its character for the area, what that allocation would be.
Has the property been annexed yet, or did I miss it?
That'll come through. We're going to do the annexation, the rezoning and development agreement, all at the same time. The annexation will only be one hearing, and then the development agreement is by ordinance.
And we own it?
No.
One, one last thing, and very, very short. Is there a projected timetable where you think this might be coming up and presented for approval?
We hope we iron things out by June, and then, you know, council has a summer break, too, and that'll go to council in August, September.
Commissioner Bordon?
Just to clarify something, when we, and I know you're going to go through next steps, but when you talk about annexation, development agreements, and rezoning, the only one that comes to us is the rezoning, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But I can make reference to it. You know, an annexation is an annexation because, but it'll be in the report, the details for you, for what the rezoning, what we've achieved and what, moving forward to the next public hearing.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
It's really, that's, the rezoning comes to us from a land use perspective, a PAD, those other documents are really, they don't come through this, this mission, they, they go through the council.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy, do you feel comfortable that with the comments tonight from the commission and some of our concerns and questions, that another study session is not applicable? Do you feel that this information will be communicated to the developer and implemented in a proper manner?
Yes, I believe we got some good input here tonight, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went through it, because that helps us determine, and that was the goal for tonight, too, so that a project like this, the more information we get from you and the more information you know, there'll be more questions at the public hearing, perhaps. And to have the developer go into more of the leased land, et cetera, and let him tell you the details of what the plan is, just for your clarification. But after we get done with the studies and the development agreement especially, we'll have a better handle on this moving forward.
And one more comment, again, having to do with the three emails that we received today. I know that some of the email senders are here in the audience, along with other new faces. If there are additional questions or concerns that they might have, I would appreciate those emails coming forward, because as we discussed this evening, those will all be directed to the developer. So.
Oh, absolutely.
If, if you do, if the audience does have any other concerns or questions, we would love to see those emails.
Yeah. Well, they'll, if they come prior to the pack, it will get it prior, but if not, we'll email them all to you. I mean, the passion there is, is really commended, and we appreciate that. So we're all trying to work together on the issues.
Thank you. I know Commissioner Urb has a question.
Yes. So I think I heard you say earlier, when they were, you were talking about the, the commercial portion of, of this project, that we could have some input or suggestions, for lack of a better word, of what that would look like. So one of the things I hear constantly from the community and stuff, relative to development that occurs here in Prescott Valley, is the need for doctor, more doctors, doctors' offices, clinics, and surprisingly, grocery stores. What's surprising to me is that we're, our population now exceeds the city of Prescott, but yet Prescott has more retail grocery outlets than we have in this town. So is there ability for us, understanding, and I want to make sure the public here understands, too, that in order to get things like a grocery store or more doctors' clinics, it takes rooftops. Developers are not going to, or corporations are not going to slap a fries there off of Roberts Road in 89A unless they have the rooftops to support it. Having seen a number of developments over the few years that I've lived here, and that number increasing, is there potential discussions, or could we have discussions with the developer to have whoever on their end maybe breach those conversations with some corporate developers and stuff, relative to things like additional doctors' clinics or larger facilities, or grocery stores, for that matter, for this end of the valley?
Oh, yes, ongoing, as we speak.
Thank you.
That was at the top priority of the list. And rooftops, you are correct, that it's the county and the population, and the more that happens there will support the commercial area.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Any other questions from the commission members?
Thank you very much. I look forward to the public hearing on this.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, we do. Would you like to make that motion, sir?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We have, by Commissioner Bordon.